This will be the Carson Town Council to order this first day of October. For my services, please do imagine Carson that we are on additional foot in territory. We have an in front of us campaign, maintain a motion to accept that council down.
First day of October.
Um, discretion or anything? Yeah. All those. So today, two delegations, the first, Mr. Rob Barfus from wrestling. Um, would you like to take the podiums?
Since I'm in, first, since my life, probably, is talking together. Unfortunately, I'm talking about this like. He's very. He's small. He decides. It's not. Uh, some of you may remember about forty-five years ago, this wrestling program. Uh, the coaches didn't have a program. Five years, takes a nice, a proper year again. And had a pretty successful run for us. We, we, two. I see. We're, we're really good partners, because they're coming out. Started with, uh, own high tournament, uh, five years when we first started. And we ran that at the beginning of the year. And, uh, as we've been doing that, getting really, across, very, very. Last year, we became, but an adult wrestling program, uh, running in the States. And it ran well. Dad drew sun, of the last year. And first time operations on, at the tournament at the same time. What that led to is, we wanted to add another tournament that was in the US. And when we started, we wanted to turn this, bring more, uh, high level into, and bring in a lot of high school in the US. So, able to, is kind of, on August first, the, uh, we're going to try to, uh, two tournaments. Uh, adult tournament, and we've already been in this, this, uh, past ten, and this, and literally, and, uh, high tournaments, uh, which we've, is from, you know, Saskatchewan, Team Canada, and, uh, not as familiar. There's the movie Vision Quest. Oh, it, it was a movie that came out in nineteen-five, or, year, or eight-five. Next year, it's the fortieth anniversary of that movie. It's a wrestling movie, Matthew movie. And, uh, we have the guy that was his, he is, uh, for, as well. And for some people, it's kind of, um, but we request basically, we have needs and capital to put the money up. We have to put out, and so, so applying, we, the, is initiative. And, uh, we're requesting two thousand dollars. And also, we're going to, 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 gym. We were going to be using the high school, was, 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 had a gym. And, uh, there's in August. So.
Thank you for your presentation. I, I, if you, so probably, the UN, you, because, you went to, I have questions, though, maybe logistic, maybe, not that, but logistic. You talk in your, uh, about some of the people coming to, that sounds impressive, but on the hand, it's, to me, the reason is, the timing given. And where, why, those people, at the time, give it?
Thank you for that. Being present for that, um, is, the celebrations of, of Carson. Uh, people will need to stay in upbridge. Uh, we, to be left, that's where we're pretty, we did, uh, last, the sterling, we were, the wrestling tournament. As rock, as wrestlers, under that, other people, and we did this, that one, put everybody in upbridge, and sort of, is there places to stay there, so.
Yeah.
Same thing.
So, and other, and two, this, who, those, all the, the, uh, fit in the town, we, I don't know.
Um, we, we, we back up last year, basketball tournaments, that we have, heard that some of those, we thought that happened again. And so, we talked to this, and we told them that we would, our calendar, to date, on going, instant, and, so, at any time, if they, there's about, um, five orders, so, if we, away, in this, we pay, so the, we'll have that. Because our goal is to be a five, we, so, uh, my original question was, sorry, August when?
First, it's called, but it's, 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 so, we, 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 so, we've been, with the US Wrestling Association, that's, that's your purpose.
And, and just looking at, well, no, it's not.
It's all, yeah, true.
So, it, it works, got to grass, because, the, or something, or it is, my, one say, is, um, receive money, trust, provision, and, and, uh, we, counties.
So, uh, this is my, going to tell you, uh, when, doesn't put in, into the wrestling, uh, we are, and, uh, I expect that you will see anything from there, uh, for this either. Help, deal, for, 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 wrestle, for mass, being our volunteers, for running, because we, a lot of youth, for, for, uh, wrestling, we will love under.
Why would this not, you know, western school, if it is, or there's, and, students?
Well, rest, after school. Yeah, so, one of these, uh, it kind of, is a, kids, clubs for, and a high school, there is no, your highs, it's all, and, high school, uh, only, percent, tournaments, the wrestling was called, tournaments, and it's, so, what, school has to do is, raise our fees, wrestlers, that all, our club, and that goes to the high school. Look at how all, the school, uh, for example, all, the. Second, is the, the, pretty, act, to fund a preparation, is, but, for, in school. Ask, expect to, to us. So, this is, yeah, okay, because there actually, form, please, I, other form, uh, uh, dropped off on Friday, it's not, covering now, you'll, uh, is a.
Looking at the, answer question.
Correct. Is this, being, in, 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 yes, correct.
Surround.
Sorry, just another thought, so, um, brain is always thinking, and all, anyway, do know, Johnson, yes, that, has, um, that is less, that is not implicated towards anything, right now, doesn't matter on the amount, it tells, and, yes. Mentoring and coaching and kinds of, so there's a little pocket that is within our community, that you might be able to, as well, but I would, eight thousand, because I know, is it the second week of every month, going to, outside?
Because, it first.
The first, when it's, to me.
And, what's possible, is, thank you.
One.
Thank you, you on that.
I thought I'm.
Who else?
Thank you very much, too.
Appreciate. Thank you. Your, petition, uh, Christine, uh, from, like, national, she's, she's not, the delegation, it's, it's, come down, see if they were, to get here, okay? Item, in the, confidential, part of the, um, may take, a long time for us to do that, Jeff, remember, uh, was, here today, so, move, through, have enough time, just, I'm, just, I'm, um, so, before, the, Minus?
That's right. My, my, I love the minutes, six, seven, thirty-three days.
Okay, thank you very. And then, okay. Um, five, by policy, uh, policy, for, Jeff?
Yeah. Please, I, I'm, gaps, correct, number, last, here's council, we want to try and put something, where we have champions on board tonight. And, uh, how we, process, how they fly through the system, will be council. And we've seen, um, we've seen numerous ways that, over the years, and people say, well, I just want to go to council, and then, I can go, maybe, it, they come to council, lots of, and we, things all, generate, frustrated. And so, we, their, their council, look at, that we, help with that, we, they want, now, we're, to, to, and, 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 we keep, we, that's, right, um. Like, and, policy, and how this works, and so, what we do, is, we, 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 this, this, group, do you need, examples, um, start, this, things together, and get, have, work, them to see, get all that, and the administration puts a, see his strengths, here's what we see as concerns, here's what we think is, here's what we think isn't, kind of thing, here, fits in our, uh, master, with priority. To, as part of committee, we think, this is great, this is great, this is great, we've got to, here, here, and here, then, back in, so, so, when you have, their, whatever, together, they're, in a, position, parts in a, position, and then, you, that doesn't mean it doesn't, back and forth, and then, we don't, information, we don't, want to see examples, we, all, that'll still happen, but, and be able to show people and say, hey, there's a process, and it's not just, I have an idea, to give council, and then, I don't like your answer, right, which is, in short, what we do, is.
Just, want to, 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 that, proposal, uh, of, of, that you're going to have, big, the, that is, I think, that I was hoping, would, would sooner, than, uh, so, on both, uh, check, and, because, not that, to be, make, the decision, and so, I, that, is, you want, is benefit the gaps.
Yeah, um, it's a, forward, things in frame, this, in terms of, for us as well, the, maybe, maybe, this.
Major, fix poorly the next week, back for.
No. Fix, I, I.
Will identify on the media.
No, I, yeah.
Thanks.
So, is that, with, the, fight for, wrestling, and.
Do, and, but, people, that's great, great, we tend to, don't, you, should, want.
The, the, he's wandering the town, I'm here, doesn't need to, yeah, it doesn't, I mean, on the stage, I would, I could see, because, there's these massive, cost, down roads, there's, I was, and there is, funding, of course, for sure, and, yeah, we, we. Could, um, just for the, but, this, to, just, have, to meet into somebody, you know, a date, to the date, for, right, okay, we want to, that, share stuff.
I like this idea, because, it's a great idea, but we're still paying for it, I think we need to be, uh, that, but, we need to understand, that, the, the cheap part, obviously. I appreciate, if you put in, um, operating costs, maintenance, decommissioning, just to make, that's, might be, and to, to decommission, most things, so, will be, on a, on a, champion, you need to, you come to us with a little, just a, need you to do a good homework, it doesn't have to be perfect, but we need you to at least come, be kind of, similar, and, this is, you know, just a little bit of, brain, that, for example, reasonable and, linear, and, 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 again, we expect the champion, higher in our, and, and, ten thousand, okay, administratively, to say, yeah, they went, to, to, be, in similar, and they, and, and, that's something, so.
Okay, uh, I did that a little bit, and bring it up, to you, to me, to you, Jeff. I see Perk's Kennedy uniforms, there. Wait.
You just give me the old thought.
So. Well, waiting, please, also, know, what you're here, and, uh, and carry on.
Sure. Any of this, just, I'm, just, I'm, on behalf of, our, our, super, and sort of, the, in the, of transfer, uh, the, do them both sides, it's a very, for that, uh, after, uh, here, on, is with that, general relation, uh, to, um, so, like, uh, we, uh, Jeff, for each, uh, me, we have, presentations, and they're, and we, go into, the, uh, team, hold this, for, interest, now, and, about, presentations, and we, uh, presentations, uh, secret.
Thank you to talk to you, giving overview of Waterton, National Park, this, this, this summer, who go prior, for, this, use, our visitor, and, and, also, either compute question, one, within, that actually, certainly, refer to, to, okay, oh, just a quick, for, Perk's, ending, the, and culture, which, we keep, all of the work, do, um, it, it, so, make difficult decisions, to, out, the needs of the environment, visit, whether, sustain, from, actual and, of perspective, for the, most, now, the, first, handed assistance, and a five hundred and five kilometers, and so, small, uh, the area, is not, large enough, a whole inch of what, so, to be good things, of course, it. Territory, so, the, and, of the, two, uh, three, seven signatories, to team, and, coordination, also, in, um, anyways, a few, the, team group, originally, to, local, areas on the side with the board, so, a real community, um, focused, continue to work, close, place, or, issue, reasonable, uh, national, designated. And I, taught, position, that's, uh, a, a, and, come in, also, Waterton, by, and, custom, is, that, by, reserves, and, a, heritage site, needed in nineteen-five, and, it's, the world heritage, not Waterton, this, this park is the world heritage site, if you, patient, especially on, uh, for, a strong, um, um, years, you know, we have, certain expectations of visitors as they come, we, lots of communication, especially, as we, here, about, the climate, in our, time, or, earth, uh, if I brought, pathways, particularly, to your, and, to, 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 visitors, so, and, uh, various, parts, said, we, uh, many, the day we, that is, looks, to, with anyone, and, and, we need to, we didn't have, direct traffic, in, for, fully, denied, team, has an impact on, and, please, I'm, interested in, from your, about, screen, formal, this, the steps, a step, our visitor, we want, visitors to see here, experience, sometimes, as, 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 identifying management. And when, we should increase, the, the, staying, part, we've had a, and, have, what options might, available, which, is, at this point, we have no, pre, deep notion, of the, how we're going to manage this increased, situation, it's, protection, uh, do have an impact on, and, 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 so. So. And to. Uh. Do this to. As a. Process. For being at this. Uh, our colleagues. In us. Of. Nation. And we were. At. May. When I called. From National. Where they are supporting us. Simple. This frame. Is to create. Transparent. And. As. Data. Uh. To support. The decision. Process. Station. Population is a challenge. Around. The world. Sword. Always actually. Have. National. Pro. That unfortunate one, also that. Women during protests. Um. There are a few options. There's a few options that we have to. Have to. The ones that. National. And. And. Uh. Given. Train. Park or go to a. Destination. National Park has a. Nation. System. We. Have the combination of paid parking and. Shuttle. Or. Shuttles depending where you want. So. All of these tools have. Excellent. Threat. All come with increased cost. To. And. Many of those challenges for. Uh. Local regional. Leaders and. The. Time. Know. Certain. People of that. So. Lots of challenges. Any of those. Which is. We. Want. Be here to get. What. Uh. Visitation, uh. To October. Yes. Backed. So. So. Uh, we. Been quiet. With our. This call. Of. Temper. And so. Quiet. Um. Once. And again. There's come. In July, August, and you can. See that. We have. In. Visitation. And. Um. Is it. The fact that the. Fire. Southern. That has a. And that. And it's not. A long term trend, perhaps, we should. Not. Increase. Station. Seeing. Station. National. So not. Just how well. Want to increase. What they. Value. The region. International. Montana. State of Montana. Also. Is in. Black. Head. And. 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 Definitely have. That more. Reason. So is it still over from that? Also. Temper. Based here. And. National Park. May. Or. Project. You know. Is. The. Times. Uh, so. That. Having. Apologies. That's a really good. This. Uh, this. Park. John. Last. Weekend. I guess. We. We've. Been in August. Seventeen. Both of all of our. Funding. And off. Uh. It's. Credit to the traffic engineers because. The gridlock. And. That's. The. Move. Anywhere. Uh, there is. Station. As they will later the weekend. Uh. Let's. Look. Some. Pressure. Um. And. Uh, in order to. Repeat. Uh, so. We got. A. Quality of visitor experience. If I brought personal on this whole. I'd. Tell them to. Later. Very good. Experience and. Experience. On the park. Uh, you see, while. The side that. Turns to. Don't. Um. Camping. Is that. In the. Account. First couple. Of. System. We. Or online. Internet. Opportunities. Um, and. To find. That. They're. Reserving that. There's. A lot of people in. In them. And to be. And to. People funding. Their. Um, and, uh. Visitation. Is. And. Well. Uh. To start to. Not pleasant. To tell somebody. Hey, I'm really sorry I've. Over. Come back. That's not easy and it's not. So all. And. Pre-advanced so. We do. May not. Tell somebody. But. Check. And. Drive us. Online. I believe that this whole. We were right. This. Uh, but we are in. Subdivision. Nation. I have. Students out on. Uh. Just called. Perseps. So. Talking. Is it on. And then, uh. In people on. Form. Turn. Uh, double. Eight. Just. So we're looking at that data. If stranger. Their data. Report. From reservation system. And at the. Gate, so if you. Summer. Then. You are. The. Only time. That. Are visitor. And where they're. Coming from. Uh, so I. Start. What we find. For visitor. That in this. This is. Available. Um. Next. Here. If you are aware of our rec. Recreation. That we. Just on. This. Related to. I can base. Team. Um. We did develop. Develop. Volunteer. To the. Uh, we increased the planage throughout the park about that and may. Of course. Always have. People. Uh. Know. About. Uh, the. Traffic. And. Are not. Process of, um, finding. Our data. And. And hope to, uh, review. Ground. In Germany. And. In time next spring about. Uh. What. Or what. If. If you don't. Then. Didn't appear. That that. And. I've checked. The numbers of. Absolutely. And I. Uh. Had a. My. If it should have been consistent with twenty twenty-three, so. We. Are aligned. With. Water. Uh. Water. Is. Our. Yes. We're in a. That's. The time. With. Some people. We have. Going up. Just. Keep. Right. Uh, kind of. Fishing. As much. Uh, so. I think we'll. At this. And. Other item that. Uh. In. For. Now. Not to make. Best possible. Motion. That. Put up. And this. Uh. That. And cultural. Heritage. Um, we'll be using. The. Visitation. And. To make. Communication. Of these going forward. I think. Our. The colleagues will. Stand their. S. Uh, riding. This. Right now. And to the full band. They're trying. To. Those. And. Now they're. To. Model. And they. So. We. We're trying to strike a balance. In. On. The. As. As. We do our. Part and not. And to do their part to. Who. Just to ensure. Not to. Of, uh. Also. Uh, some of. To. The monetary. And the building owners. And. The. Own. under the building owners, um, for sure, like they're depressed, they smell, and they claw at all of our drinking water, and it's both construction. All of us should watch this year to let them know that they're in the zone now, to help the park, because I think several of you know, is just trying to figure out what needs to be, it is a whole risk and, um, we want to find a balance, that it's, 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 so I know I have a few questions.
Thank you for coming. The difference that you there, or you doing, you're working hard to help us. I appreciate you saying you take your impact on the neighbors and getting the opportunity to help, how it impacts this. So you're doing, you're very, very much in the people who, so I, I had a vote, we've talked to people in town, in county, so people that listen for, I'll just don't, so, so, uh, probably there's just more for me, people who come, these just happen, and they're particular, the voting, only zero times this year, second down, zero, therefore only zero this year. For that, the lives, in the afternoon, it takes someone to get there, but, you know, I talked to a business owner here who, who has, named your part, and it's a part of the work, and one area of his sale is about fifty percent because of that cost. That's a fifty percent is not a square in any measure. I wonder if between the tax present, say, if you're to now, it's maybe too far, see, all the, but, under your, unless you approach, I can understand is the parts of your dogs, and so your part, people which will, and subset of their, you know, the rabbit, I think that's just two breaks. First of all, living these days enjoy more than less. Your number, because it becomes more widely known, and there are people own businesses, it's going up, and, uh, think, think it doesn't, this is, so, to those of you wondering if you're, I don't know, it'd be with, in your, that's what you're calling it, and, and I, the guy, the do you know, just, yeah, totally everything you said, in, um, and thank you for the information, and we're sorry that you came to, because you said, um, a part of the park, and that, because we're here to, and both of us, I made Houston best place that could possibly leave, and we don't know what that is, and you, together, kind of worked to, I can't, said, I too typically twice kayaking, and I went, last year, I would go, I'd go check, and I had to do, I had no, I'm doing, so that's kayak there, me and, and he have many in an area, and we, is, like, I, I don't go to this, there was, for me to put my, or anybody else, and we're locals, we're the ones that are there, so that was hugely frustrating, and there'd be, be many others do here in town, probably we felt, I mean, happen at Jasper did boost for sure, because I actually asked the same, and what brought you, and it was, they have res, in Jasper, and of course the, down in, but, for business owners that live in Princeton, and they own businesses, and they all businesses in Princeton, the struggle, you're still getting, people, but, locals were soft, not go inside my grandma, she, I mean, I think every, every council has heard it, I mean, if we're people that are, it's worth, for me, it's each better, of work.
Um, it's, okay, certainly, even when the decision was made, probably the local community that they, like, is that you, really, feeling much, and, why we quit their, so if you, if you commit, I, like, it was, how busy was, and so, but, did try to, ultimately, were we this, this, I stood in, but, are we this, and it occurred a lot back, like, there this, either, like, um,
Seventeen, and, there's, Camp Brown, and, I forget the name off the top of my head, thank you, um, re-open, and, so now you're down to, to Camp Brown, right?
Please, the, I'm sorry, uh, our design is too, uh, is too, it's, the top of, actually, my, top of my desk is, we, suppose, you don't have budgets, uh, look at the capital, so, there's not a line item for, there is discussion, to, uh, how would we build it in a way that, for values?
Well, I guess one comment would be, it's been a year, and you're, you know, like, I'm at Camp, on a, I, even when I cover it, in Camp, in seven years, I'm just, this county, please, this, right?
One time, we were up, so take, half car, because we went down there, they have a dog sniffing, and then they tag it under the water, it'd be nice if water, so we'd enforce that, I think that's part of the problem from last year, we weren't enforcing people, people put the boats in there, so it made it really nice, and it's nice with the dog just walking around, it's, you put your tag on there, and they check it, and away you go. So, if water didn't somehow get a dog, something like that, that would be great, I'm very, very tired of it.
I was going to address that, it's the same idea, um, why don't we have the dog sniffing program, it's the issues that we have with the boats, and possibly contamination, which we don't want, but if we have the ability to have the dogs to do the sniffing, when they come inside the park or just before, why not have it as part of one solution? I mean, I know it's all cause, it's all costly, but it might be a cost worthwhile hanging, in order to allow the surrounding communities, like parks, to be able to help the citizens and
The issue is enforced, might be really enforced.
Right.
Just one last comment, I don't know how we can underscore any more heavily, the financial impact, that the park makes to our community, we're at the end of the road, and it leads to these wonderful recreational facilities, so we don't have heavy industry here, we don't have light industry, we, we are a community that depends on, on that, and that's part of the reason why we even live here, is we enjoy the, the natural amenities that are around us, but I think if you went and did a, continued your survey walking down the streets of Parks, then you'd get a different result than you would from surveying people who are on the streets of Parks.
Okay, anything else from the council? Thank you, thank you very much for telling me to talk to us.
No, appreciate the discussion, and certainly, um, uh, your comments have been very, now Matt's here also as a reporter, so we'll certainly keep going back. If you wish us to come back, please do reach out, I've got some contact info, with the superintendent Chuckle, I'm not planning to go anywhere, um, so, uh, even though, we haven't, we haven't come back, uh, either in the spring, and I think last day, I'll just add, we've heard similar things from some of our neighbors, uh, the other impacts that they're seeing is traffic volumes and traffic speed, especially around agricultural equipment during harvest time, especially that in August period, and illegal camping, uh, on lands and, you know, access point, and, and, it's tricky, um, and we are looking at construction costs, now too, we tend to reevaluate the design and make it more feasible and reasonable.
We know that story well, managing infrastructure in this community, but, please send a message to your new superintendent, that, um, let's get Prandall rebuilt.
And in the short term, we're looking at optimizing some of our other camping spaces to impact, and, so.
Thank you for coming to see us, and we certainly would be interested, I think, in seeing you come back with an update on some of these things, next spring, and we can arrange.
For sure, for sure, we're happy to.
Thank you for spending some time with us, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Carry on with the agenda, we were at, the policy after twenty fifteen, these charges policy, Washington, do you want to?
Yes, uh, please, just a quick, it's, it's very good and very detailed, there wasn't said a miscommunication, there was never a request that they would comment on an agreement with the Pickleball Association, but, you know, it's, it's still fine information to consider, um, everything else there, just for your consideration, as far as, now that this facility has been completely redone, how should that run, so, any other questions? Be glad to answer.
In your little write-up, I see that for the pickleball, you have a price per year, that was discussed with the president of the club, or is that something that was initiated through?
No, mayor, unfortunately, I, I really don't know how that got into the discussion with the committee, so my request, uh, to grant you, was that the committee, as I understand their function to give these kinds of decisions, uh, would comment on year, uh, no, I have not talked to anyone from the association about this, and, and, okay.
So, just to clarify, the, the undiscussed thing with them, or the concept of renting it from seven to ten in the morning, would be discussed out of them?
Yes, so.
In other words, is that at their instance, or ours?
As, as yours. The exclusive use was at theirs, um, the administration was, had an MOU drafted, which ultimately, the association declined to sign this year, as they felt the season was just too short. I've always said that some kind of deal would not appropriate, but we never discussed it.
You have a question, what, what kind of use, you know, in, in other words, was it really all, all association people, or was it, you know, just couples buying some money to exercise, and, you know, what does it play?
Current use at the courts here, huh?
Like, over the summer, since, um,
Just, I, what I have heard from Craig Hart Allen is, you know, they're just well-used, and I, I think he would have said by the association, so.
What I'm trying to get at, I guess, is, if, if we allot four of the six courts to them in the morning, is that proportionate to its demand? I don't have any information based on that.
Yeah.
Sure.
So.
Sure, go ahead, mayor.
All right, so, what recommendation, the requested action that you had, is for council to approve the proposed amendment to the fees and the charges policy? yes, that's it, they were renting it at ten dollars and off, of course.
They all, all pay fees, baseball, basketball, they all pay, everybody pays a fee, so I don't see a problem with this particular fever, came a bit of a break.
Yeah.
My question is number six, basketball courts, are you talking down by the pool, are people renting that to pay terms? I just see regular, just people out there using it all the time, so we're not charging just a regular amount, kid out there shooting, it's if they want to book it, okay.
It's the concept, I still have that question about, so you have one or two scenarios where they get four of the six, who've got people lined up, hoping teams to two, or, they're the only guys who use it anyway, so of course you let them have four of them, you know, I just don't know how to, how to do that, I, I'm just reticent to, to lock in four courts for the entire summer without something to base my decision on.
And, uh, my suggestion there, council, would be, uh,
So I can call Craig and get his, more detail.
Well, and, and really, again, because of how this all kind of came in front of me, like, this is from the committee, not from the administration, I mean, it's not like I have any serious objection to any of the numbers, but the fact that we have worked throughout most of the year with, with Craig and the association, and discussed the MOU, I just think, doing this now without their consultation would be about.
Counselor Jensen?
My question is, is with, with pickleball courts, especially the ones that are law.
Of course, you would hope you catch the criminal, but, mayor, and then counsel.
All right, I need to go along with what you were talking about, if I remember, at one time, when we were discussing the idea of the pickleball court, the original asked whether they wanted all of the pickleball, of available to.
Now, original sponsors, we get it.
Right, and so I think that if they're satisfied with four, I understand we don't have the proper data to, to base our evaluation, is that three? I think, from the usage I've done, from what I hear, is that four is pretty well what they're using, so I would think that's maybe adequate.
I just, I support councilperson in the, let's have a conversation, right, talk about things unless we have actual fact, so I just think, we're not, we're not passing this at CCW anyway, so let's just get a little bit more information and go from there.
And even if we make a decision, you know, based on the input from the Parks and Rep Committee, we can try it, if, if something's off kilter, we can change it.
The request was to approve the fees, not the usage, so it's a fees that we are requesting to approve.
But they go hand in hand, that's, that's for the support boards, yeah.
But they have not signed the MOU, right? So, we start, you know.
Yeah, this may be a bit premature, you know, in terms of ducks in the, and there's a certain amount of temptation, and I think that's justified, so, yeah, we're, we're, is that that way, and, and, yeah. Okay, thanks, Josh. Um, the, the agenda says, I don't know, six other business, I don't know, control item, are we ready for that?
Let's practice that with Craig, um, I've asked you to come and speak to the committee about this a little bit, uh, we've been talking a lot about the, the cat issues, and so he's been working with those stakeholder groups, uh, we, you guys have a motion on the table for some funding to work with these favorite cats, of course, um, we're considering changing gears on that a little bit, and we've talked about a, a more local program as well, working with that clinic and doing some things with them, so I've asked the orgs to come, give you a bit of an update, and where we're at, making sure we're all on the same page, uh, that we need to move this forward.
Okay, thank you, Josh. Thank you, Leah, always great to hear from you.
Yeah, thanks for having me, I apologize, I have a bit of my difficult, so, um, yeah, I, I just, I'm sorry I don't have anything in hand, most of this will be in my report, my monthly report, but, uh, I, I'm grateful that Melody's here, and I wanted to start by recognizing what she does personally, and their organization, Christ and Letta Park, honestly, they do a lot more work, the difficult work than, than even I do on a daily basis with animals, they, my job is actually quite simple, they do the really hard work, and so I just, I'm grateful for what they do, um, and of animals, this disease, or whatever, and that's what they do, so I'm grateful for their, for their contribution. Um, so, yeah, I just wanted to bring everyone up to date of where we're at today, so we, we had a bit of, a quite a few complaints about a cat problem, particularly in the east end of town, and, uh, so, I had, you know, brought forth the idea of doing a TNR clinic, and, um, perhaps I might have, I, I might not have understood all the fine print that was associated with that clinic, it was approved by council, but then when I had conversations with the Canadian task force, I, I learned that there'd be quite a few, um, changes that would have to be made to or by law, and that really went along with our goal, I thought that our goal was to lower the cat population in town, and their goal, or their kind of, um, initiative is more to spay neuter and release the animals back in the town, we would have to allow the, the feeding of animals, and we'd have to have caretakers for all of those animals and whatnot, and so it was a little bit more, it just didn't seem to, to cover what I, what I thought that we wanted, uh, for the town, and so we started to explore some other options, and, um, and this is kind of where we're at today, so, between our last conversation, where you approved the motion to, to bring in a task force, and now, what I have done is I've gone around and tried to monitor the cat population, get an idea of, you know, where we're at, and, and hotspots and whatnot, I've also met with stakeholders, including Dr. Ripley and local residents and things like that, to kind of gather information from them, um, I have also done some scouting and gathered information about feeding hotspots, because inevitably, feeding of cats doesn't increase the population, doesn't really matter where, you know, how you look at it. Been actively trapping cats, and, uh, we're homing out, grateful for Council Jensen, her suggestion of reaching out to farmers, has actually been very successful, and with the limited effort that we've put, put forth, and, uh, I do think that we can actually achieve a lot much more success if we continue to pursue that, so thanks for that idea, um, we do have some citizens that are just adamant about helping me trap, trap cats, and so, a lot of the effort is, uh, you know, comes from their help, um, you know, we have citizens actively trap them, and, and bring them to me, and we, or, we own, we own together. Or, which I'll explain very well, and, so, the way I look at it, we have two problems, we have irresponsible cat owners, that's one of our problems in town, that's anything from people that have one cat that allow it to go at large at all times, to people that have thirty to forty cats in their house, and, um, and we have a few of those in town as well, so that's one of our issues, the other issue is the feral cat population, and really, you know, the, the two separate problems, the irresponsible cat, um, owners is all covered in our bylaw, and so really, you know, in order to, to work with that group, we need to, to target, uh, cats at large, and, and people are get, kind of getting to the idea that, oh, my cat can't just wander free, um, also enforcing cat licensing, obviously, that's something that Also enforcing cat licensing, obviously, that's something that I haven't cracked down a whole lot, you know, up until recently. And so it's something that we can work on, that our department can work on to improve that area. Also, working with people that have more cats than what is approved in the bylaw. So the bylaw approves, most people have two cats, and with permission, you can own up to seven cats. But like I said, we have people that own way, way more than that. And so, you know, that is, those are some things that can fairly easily be done to help with that. With the irresponsible cat population, or irresponsible owner cat population, and obviously with a full-time animal control officer, we see just much more success in that area. And we also have a lot of, like I said, irritated citizens that are, you know, instead of taking their anger out on the owners, they're coming to me, which is good, because they're giving me the opportunity to enforce the bylaw, and it's good. That we can find some success there. So first step is finding a home for cats. And, you know, like I said, Counselor Jensen's suggestion is to work really well. With two phone calls, we were able to have a request list of 15 cats, just in a matter of two phone calls. So I believe that if staff work on that, whether it's the office staff or the animal control officer, actively work on trying to find farmers that are interested in cats and other restoration agencies, I think we could probably rehome, you know, 20 to 30 cats a year.
So, sorry, interrupted, just a question. So a farm that will take these cats, when we do that, will the females in particular be spayed?
Yeah, so that, yeah, we don't want us, you know, a lot of the farmers actually want the cats to not be spayed or neutered, because they want, you know, the growth of population and whatnot. But, you know, there is a question of whether that's a good thing for the town to be doing, and I would say that probably not. It's probably not a good thing for us to be rehoming cats that aren't spayed or neutered. So that will be part of the, that will be part of it. But it all starts with what I call an order list, getting people to put down, I want this many cats. And then we would go and... That's spayed or neutered. And then we would, you know, take them to their, to their new homes. And just, you know, continually gather, you know, try to get that shopping list or whatever, that waiting list growing, so that we can continue to ship cats out of town in a fairly good rate. And, you know, physically, we have lots of cats that are friendly, like a lot of our cats, most of our feral cats are really friendly and, you know, are ready to go to homes right away.
Sounds like a work in progress. I interrupted, but...
That's a good idea.
No, I... Are you willing to take...
Yeah, for sure, yeah.
Counselor Burton?
Well, when I live on an acre, if you're trying to get our cats established, you're taking five... Cat, we said, no, I don't. Question for you, have you contacted the county about, you know, those? Could they send out a, I don't know how many times here, they put out a little flyer about different things that are going on? That could be one of their flyers in their newsletter? They have a paragraph in the newsletter that says, hey, there's an acre, show there's any farmer owners? You know, let us know. I think that really could be effective, because like I say, you know, some of ours have cats, were mice, so we can breed cats.
Yeah, and the truth is that we actually have a higher demand now than I can with a fill. Like, it's just, I haven't been able to actively trap cats. So all the cats we get is, comes from citizens that travel. So, you know, having a full-time animal control officer, which we're working on, will be key to success in this, because someone will have to be actively trapping, because we have more demand now that we have trapped cats. And so, yeah, that's, that's a great idea.
Counselor Brown?
First of all, I just wanted to say, Leo, you're doing a fantastic job. You've got an incredibly hard job in the town of Princeton. And since you've been with us on your different jobs, you're fantastic, and we really appreciate it. We hear nothing but good things. You're saying we have this shopping list of cats. Sound inappropriate, but you understand what I mean to ask. How many cats do we have?
Well...
Because you're scaring me a little bit. If you're saying we have homes for 15 dozen, how many are we looking at that we literally have in this, in our cat population that could be rehomed-ish? Twenty?
I think we probably have, well, you know, we have, like I said, I own one home right now that has 40 cats in the home. Those cats are, you know, how much time is spent outside, I'm not sure, but we're about, we're about to take those cats away. And so those are going, they're going to have to find a home somewhere.
So if we're not, sorry, so if we're not speaking of those, if we're only speaking of the feral cats, because those are the angry foxes I have?
Yeah, I would say 50, somewhere between, minus, like, let's say we include the colony, or if you...
Yeah.
Including the colony, which we don't really want to rehome the colony at this point, I would say.
So the cats that you're just...
I'm talking about cats, not part of the colony. Yeah, most of them, most of them, like, now we have 15 on the waitlist, you know, people have like 15 cats. That's only after reaching out to two farmers. You know, that doesn't include any Facebook advertising, any rescue agencies, nothing with the town. That's just, when Counselor, I think Counselor Jensen might have referred, I think that's how we got in touch with those farmers, is she, when she made the suggestion, I don't know how it all happened, but someone told us that we had like 50 cats.
Sorry, can I ask how many, because this has gone back and forth, and I've heard a number of numbers. To your knowledge, how many cats on the Eastville colony?
Probably, there's around 25, and all of them separate four. Oh, sorry, I missed the last part.
25 cats, and then four left spayed or spayed or neutered.
So sorry, I missed, I missed a part here. So why are we not rehoming those ones?
Because it's a program that, that the town, at the moment, we support, we support.
So we're spay, because I thought when we talked about it, we were spaying, neutering them, and then, and then our goal was to rehome them, so... No?
That's different than the colony. So the colony is, the, the, the idea behind the colony is if you allow the colony to exist, your cats will not fill their space. So people have to be willing to live with X amount of cats in their area. So that's one program that the town supports at this point. I think we have $2,700 a year, something to tell the town to adopt that program. My program, and what I'm talking about, and what we've been talking about for a while, is different, that's...
Sorry, I thought...
Leaving the colony cats alone, and targeting all the other cats that are not owned and are just grow.
Thank you.
Counselor Jensen?
Okay, so that's my understanding, that the colony that is owned by Rick Sonmolda, is that they have all been spayed or neutered, neutered with the exception of black watered trees.
Seven, four.
So, so, so that program is working. So, and like you were saying, we're spinning that into their colony. They don't want other cats in, and because they don't want it, and they're not reproducing.
Counselor Burton?
Just preface my comments with friends of the cats, who's some of the biggest part of people I know, and have been lifelong... ...to get what they're about. But I just cannot, I never have and I never will, support putting the cat back in the community. I'm spending taxpayer dollars, and then I put it back, I can't answer that. When I got to the songbird, they all looked the same, you know? And you commented, Mr. Chair, that there's been a decrease of birds at your theater.
Yep.
And to the neighbors, they kind of all look the same. Though I don't know which two they're scrapping in my yard the other night, did two of them. The neighbors might have known they were out too, I don't know, but, right? So it's thin comfort to the neighbors, to the songbirds. I don't know if they carry diseases, you know, the person's cat who goes out to the bathroom and gets a disease from the other cats. It's thin comfort to all of those groups. And I'm in a spot where I have to represent everybody, not, not just my friends who are helping the cats. They're not helping, they're sure they are. But I, I just can't support any program that puts them right back. I can't support leaving 25 happily neutered cats in one spot, I can't...
...about it. There's people who used to be at your 10 o'clock store at 10 o'clock. And for the first time, I'm a pet owner, I love my cats and other cats. For the first time to Eastville, I woke up one in the morning, two cats having a conversation. So, I don't think they're spreading, or they're just, that's what they do, this colony, whatever.
I live in the north end of East Hill, there's more cats, particularly in the evening, dusk, and I've got less birds in my yard. For the first time ever, anecdotally, last week, I cut my lawn, I cut a piece of town property. Surprisingly, magpie parkers is where the brains and the chest are. Got to be by cats, I'm thinking. And I thought magpies are smarter than that, but anyway, that, that, I'm seeing that at my, at my yard. Counselor Jensen?
Okay, well, just, just a fun fact. So while all of you were asking on Facebook, what's that recipe to get rid of wasps, that sugary water eating? I had no wasps. I didn't even have any moths. My feral cats were catching in general. I was finding my own, filming moths and their weird wasps. At the end, proof was on my back.
I think some birds have more value than...
I'm sorry, I like my cats.
I get that.
And I have no mice.
Anybody else, and Leo?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. You know, unfortunately, cats can eat birds whether they're fed or not, so it doesn't matter. If you see the colony, there's still gonna be birds, and kill them, at least. As the, you know, the past, the difficulty is, you know, because, you know, if you're a cat person, like my son is a cat person, so he doesn't mind the nuisance of the cat. But my wife is a gardener, so she does mind the nuisance of the cat. And so my wife would rather deal with moths and other things than, you know, than cats. And so the difficulty here is, in the town, from what I'm hearing, most people don't, they've got to deal with the moths and the wasps, and everything else than cats. And it is a problem, it keeps people awake at night. Like, there are people that do literally struggle to sleep enough to get to work and whatnot because of cat poisoning. And it's not just under East Hill. $1,000. I think that maybe, you know, that would have been a really nice thing if someone could have come in here and just sorted it all out for us, but I still think we would be successful. I'd estimate that we'd be about $1,500 in cat traps to kind of upgrade and be, be able to be effective. That's well within our existing budget for the animal control department. We would need a full-time animal control officer, which we're, you know, working on. And, you know, winter time would be a good time for that person to work on this. You know, there would be some, some debt funding obviously that we're staying and neutering. And I believe that that, for this year at least, is easily within the existing budget. And, you know, I do recommend that we continue to lend, person let by at this time, because I do, they do take a burden off of, off us for sure, and offer a great source to the community that we probably can't and not even sure would want to offer. And so those are the recommendations that I make at this time.
I have one quick question, and then Counselor Burton will get the last question word on this. The $2,500 that we allocated in 2024, do we know how much of that has been spent?
I don't, we, we've separated ourselves from the, the record TV and that, we, so...
Does Melody know? I'm just curious where we're at.
Oh, tell me one was...
One was? Okay, yeah, so this, this year's budget is...
Okay, thank you. And Counselor Burton, last word on this one.
So, Jeff, is administration looking for direction on how big is going to enforce the number of cats per household policy? Is that one part of why you had the presentation?
Well, I think once we're aware of it, then enforcement naturally follows. I don't think that's an issue often, we don't know. So it's really an awareness piece, yeah.
Yeah, they're looking for a direction on that, though.
No.
But the other thing is, people that are attached to cats often do emotional... Like, one of our gentlemen down there catches his wife's cats, she passed away, now they're the reminder of hers. So there is emotional attachment, and no one wants to rat them out or ruin his life, or there's that kind of fear of doing that. So it's a matter more of finding out and people, and, and just acting on it.
Okay, thank you, Leo, for talking with us again. I guess keep doing what you're doing, and I'm encouraged to see Melody's folks and you engage in a meaningful, positive discussion, I think that's a good thing.
I just wanted to give you a heads up. I increased in pet dogs on Main Street for a while. The pound unfortunately is fairly full at the moment, and reserve is half full of puppies right now. They've got to rehome a lot of puppies, so we're going to, we're going to see an increase of puppies on the street.
Do you have a dialogue going with the blood drive on this kind of thing?
I do, at this point, it's, they want us to come on, see on site and take care of it for them. But they are working towards an animal control department.
Counselor Brown?
Sorry, just in regards to the dogs, is, is it worth looking at rehoming dogs? Like, would rehome cats to the county? Like, could that be a...
It's a different, yeah, we, that's a lot...
Okay, I'm just like, we've got the same here, so it's possible we could just go to the north.
One more question.
Sure.
Is there a place, something for us to donate money towards this, you know, to help, help you with this problem?
Melody's group?
Yeah.
Right, so is that, is that well known? Because I'm sure there are lots of us who'd like to donate our money on the tax money to help with the problem. But how do we do that?
Yeah, they, they do their own advertising for, for funding. And we also still receive donations for animal emergencies and whatnot through, through our efforts as well.
Melody, it's my understanding that you're having a garage sale coming up, and that if people are wanting to donate things, she's been on Facebook, I've seen it, just get ahold of her, drop stuff off, and then they're selling the stuff. And then that money goes into, I'm just looking at her face with everything I say to make sure I'm saying it right. And then that money just goes into the taking care of all of this, essentially is my understanding. Thank you. Great.
Fourth and Vince of October.
Fourth and Vince of October.
And I do take cash donations and...
It, it, it's very... And sorry, one, that is just, frankly, because he does give us a massive... Services for, I mean, but it's not a whole...
I was in this morning with one, Bassett House, eight or nine cats.
And one horse.
Thank you, Leo, that's great. Thank you, Melody. I see.
Yeah, she'll just food. We lost Jensen, but. Probably he'll always. Before lunch, we jumped it. Okay, we jumped it like irrigation. We probably.
So let, let's go to, uh.
See, they come back.
And we'll do. Ready?
Sure.
Okay, um, Jeff, go ahead with, uh, South Coast Irrigation District.
No, I just was going to talk about that. Was, I was trying to understand exactly what you asked. On what is, is like, is that you're probably. Same way that. You want to, kind of that. To stop having open, the issue, we just want. We are, this is. What?
Next one, you go. To six.
A little bit behind the eight. This is gonna happen.
Thank you. So, well, yes. So, the programs are, have been adopted in our form or another. In the majority of provinces and territories in the country. So, I'll start with a little background. Recycling was by the way, these ultimate. Program, whether they're managing it themselves or. So, the programs vary. Which are quite frustrating. First, you know, I can. And producing materials has really caused us. What now is PR recycling or a producer lead a program. This will need ID to standard up program and comment that were accepted throughout the whole province. Holidays really have a third part relationship. You have the option to participate as collector of material. Of the producer, be paid by producers if they want. Set of this coming into, coming into being the standard across the province. Whether or how long it takes. So, going forward, really four layers there. Provincial government, the oversight that government has appointed, which is karma for recycling authority. Then there is the work that presents the producers and their circular materials. Town, they manage, is under law. And there's the producer, the managers on that use heat keys. See what products are jamming hate focus right now. And so, you know, General Mills, Kellogg's, Nathan's Girls, Amazon, Kenner's. Hold on. So, big change, sure. You know, big question case, well, it is the. There's some of these costs, you and I, or whatever. Consumers now, as before, supply your municipality, everybody does. But now, there is some based on you, both have more of an esteem. You know, to the. Program. Now, what now, the town has to be, to collect on the producer's behalf, that's the option. Or steps says to you, that's the person who's really help that in this community, figure out when, how. And of course, have to. And also curbs, hard to break. Next, we should see curbs. Town again, must get. So, at this administration, cards support services, next see they to meet the standards of all this. Because they live up to the regulations. If their act on the town needs to be. Broad, it's gonna have the council question, my question.
So, what is that? I mean, I think that I may answer that. And then he told the girl, so then, if he's, then have a conflict with. To do it, these traps, is that right?
Well, only that, that it's recycling is only. And then, circular materials would have the discretion to be long work. And they're gonna use of scale, you'll probably see real collect. That's what they're.
Question, just to call what the council said. The same cycle breakup coverage and it could be, you know, what happens. The program, or maybe for some collection.
Not under this.
Jeff and I really, we've, the town currently is registered to the province to. Look like we, we this council, and it's just on building now. When I sit behind the eight, I have the communities, I see the limits, it's like, there's milestones. In mid-October and spring, supposed to have rolled out its in place and, and it's difficult with that. We got play in there, we will through the administration council, sorry, remember.
So, trying to, as tomorrow, that tomorrow, the, in the morning, and a day. Right now, we say we ask, in any direction, but not because we know. It's like from what's circular, material yet. But what we know right now is also a. Used to pass together, to pay the mental and. So, I need, I need to have difficult. And I even do. But the police should optimize their job. I, I don't, probably good.
And that they are not in a position or willing to scale up requirements, which would be, we need this material. Only level of information that, all kinds, pretty good things. Not willing, town can, will find contractors, but then you, which is no.
Sure. And to rest the council, we struggling with, some people who are, and have, have. They may to be, that, maybe a human. And we don't curb side, the ultimate side, in the next couple. And we have it, where we have, we are probably not collecting major material. We would need to, so, we're, we're positions to be opting out as one of the. Circuits, yeah, if you wanna roll around the, their pattern. And if you want a Friday, some curve, sure. And there, yeah, well, that's under that, that person's gonna be, and then they're. So, probably, right now, Josh and I have two, lots of. Is that, that we're not, but we're certainly gonna have those stations with them. That's really, that, to be able. And I don't think the parties with capital. So, those things we're struggling a little bit, right? It may, that it, maybe have to, back to the, the larger. And I, just. Which is, down, doing, do it. A lot of the, we recycle is to the waste, have the waste site, which tensions try and, their volume, there's, there's a limit. And tons of heat. Almost every year, we go over that, this money, it's. Because we're not paying the three, out of waste stream is one. Or, you know, at the end of the day, it's gonna look, better. Management, when we, to, 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 to recycle.
When you pay, the end goal is, pick out, who's generating, us, and when we, that, we just, on. All, cost effective using what we're doing now, is great sign. Pushing.
Would it be the let, the wire, this, but if. Then we're bad, circular materials, you're, aren't you getting?
What about our non-recyclable garbage?
Still. We're not relinquishing any of possibility, solid waste now.
Most, my whole commission.
To see, which recycle, into being with, that's. And that's, but, the rest of the, of the mission, we, it's gonna be different and better. So, I just want you to be aware, it was happening now. But, but you see, I'm. I don't know what the, how the problem. Proceed any. Um, Jeff, we have sixty, sixty. Just a quick, the council, and we hear of the town has a petition on New Ian, leasing. In a great summary, I think, he's under fire, who are C and P, will be represented by, um, representing their. Beyond, we, much more, we know, when this takes shape, we, they determine. And maybe, don't know, but doing a little homework, I couldn't find. So, as you were getting inquiries, and I think you did, the community just wanted to get what we do, which is. Um, and then, ended you, uh, not, right here, but to any story, it's a, it's a paper. Right now, the answer to, media or, really, I don't have any time, totally. Been really fortunate in my time with the town, we've had a partnership with our residents here. And we have, I hope we made.
Yes, we've been kept.
Yeah, yeah. We hope, but yeah, I'll keep you advised as we learn more, we have, would also. So, this sounds ritual, and I'm curious, how the, way, so, and what station is.
If, if I may, if you're on there. For working, for municipalities, more municipalities of Alberta, first nations equal women. As well as people representing for each, the province, and people, as we've given for the commission. So, we, much more. The fifteen people.
Because he is something, the province will lighten up on the road.
That's the idea.
Some cities will be invited. So, we'll just keep it posted.
Highest primary communities get.
Yeah, so, for me. See. Um, put on, red, questions from the council.
Mind, it seems that I have heard that we, in one of the meetings, we have, that we need to be. When we have a vote, we don't have an electorate on town. Be aligning the priorities with the problem, and it might not align with what we need to. It's, it's much, and we need to be aware.
Seven, like, Justin had something, anybody else?
I have ten, of some, maybe, just say, favor, I'm saying, eight, talk. What happened is that, I actually have, I asked you, on, but, have to. Patients, um, they said, for funding, I was, I was, I was. So, I need to, yes, it's, I mean, I'm. issue, sorry, you take, yes, um, on, you.
What time? I could go back, but I can't go into table, pencils, that would, that would give me time to take.
I think you, you told me, that's what, I don't.
The, the, so.
It's, it's not enough to, as, as you get the. I was, um, just say.
I've seen, so, what does.
And you can't, you can't.
The, the. We'll go to the item, of course, yes, um, yeah, we have, the marks on, we sent, as the, sure.
There is something to, this question, that, that we have directed concern to the public house, and he says, you have to, directly to the Minister of Public Safety, maybe that the Minister of Public Safety. So, he said, going to present, he thinks, but, would he, underline, you know, that that's kind of, but, and.
He talked to company out there, way back, and it's gonna affect us, it's more, this more, we're not, we're not, we're not, if it does.
Well, that's, well, he said, so I know.
It's not gonna happen. Yeah. Okay, um, advisory council, council, Jeff?
That this is a mission, in advisory board, over the health, and the patient concerns, patient experience in our area, uh, for six, um, treatment, under, remain, but I find a bit of a challenge to put together a year election, so, it would obviously be a term.
Kelly, what do you think to do?
Oh, yeah, sure, I can, can do it for us, the work schedule, right?
So, are your questions, background, you do a fifth?
The, the, I would make, more, more, representing us.
Are you okay with that?
I mean, I guess I'm, I'm working, do it, but working like it'd be.
Okay, bring that. Would you like to participate in, in, in my, 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 oh, is, is, if that's something particular, it's a, it's a high priority for us, but, um, and that's, sure, like ten days, and, uh, yeah, it's, and you have, we consider, I think. Well, none of us do, we're busy enough.